Well, hello, welcome all. Before proceeding, I pay my respects to the Murrimina people as the traditional and original custodians of the lands on which we meet, and I acknowledge the continuing connection of the Tasmanian Aboriginal people to the skies, land and waterways. I pay respect to elders past and present. Before we commence with tonight's council meeting, please let us all pause for a quiet moment of reflection and respect. Thank you, councillors, please be seated. Well, good evening and welcome to the Clarence City Council Meeting of Monday the 18th of September 2023. This meeting is being broadcast live on YouTube and what is said in this meeting is not protected by privilege and there is a link to the agenda papers on council's website. I would like to acknowledge that tonight we have Mrs Merrill as the acting CEO. Item number two, apologies, we have a full house, there's no apologies. Item number three, declarations of interest of councillors or close associates, are there any declarations from councillors? There being none, we now move into our omnibus items. First one being item 4.1, confirmation of the minutes, that the minutes of the council meeting held on the 28th of August 2023 have been circulated, are there any matters or any issues arising? There being none, I move now on to 4.2 and 4.2.1, the mayor's diary entries, they've been circulated, diary entries from myself from the 29th of August through to today, the 18th of September, also for the deputy mayor councillor Elston Ritchie and councillor Heather Chong representing me at different events, and I thank them for that. Moving now on to 4.3, council workshops as listed in the agenda. Item 4.4, which is tabling petitions, acting CEO, are there any petitions? Great, thank you. Now move on to 4.5, which is reports from outside bodies. First one being the Copping Refuge Disposal Site Joint Authority, councillor Walker, anything to report there? Thank you very much. Moving now on to the Southern Tasmanian Regional Waste Authority, councillor Warren, anything to report there? Thank you. Nor is there anything on either Tas Water or the Greater Hobart Committee. Colleagues, are there any reports from council and special committees and other representative bodies? Councillor Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, I'd like to have the minutes of the Burridge Community Arts Centre for Wednesday, the 13th of September, thank you.
Thank you very much. There being none others, I move now on to 4.6, which is the weekly briefing reports. The weekly briefing reports of the 28th of August, the 4th and 11th of September 2023 have been circulated to councillors, are there any matters arising? Councillor James, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The 4th of September and in particular, project updates for the new playgrounds at Cambridge and South Arm Oval. With regard to the South Arm Oval, my question to you, Mr Mayor, is in relation to, back in 2019, this council passed an motion, and I think it was unanimous at the time, for the establishment of a south-east regional park. So my question is, is this in lieu of that item that was passed by council, or is there still light at the end of the tunnel as far as a south-east regional park being established in the foreseeable future?
Thank you for your question councillor James, I remember that discussion of what four years ago, Mr Moore, is there anything you'd like to add at this time or we'll take that on notice?
Through your marriage, would you prefer to take it on notice? Although there is some money still in the budget related to the south-east regional park, but I'm not sure of the details.
Thank you very much, we'll come back to the detailed briefing note councillor James, any other matters councillor James?
Thanks.
Colleagues, any other matters arising from the weekly briefing reports? There being none, I know we're at the end of our omnibus items, can I have a move of the omnibus mode? Thank you councillor Kennedy and councillor Chong, seconded, all those in favour? And that's unanimous, thank you very much. We now move on to five, item five, 5.1, public questions time and 5.1, public questions on notice, as listed in the agenda, Mr Hickman, traffic issues at Cremonn. Acting CEO, please.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a question from G Hickman of Cremonn, has given the notice, the following questions. One, will the Clarence City Council recognise the Lagoon Beach area of Pipe Clay Espinard between number 74 and 102 is a public street and that the Clarence City Council is the managing authority of this area? Lastly, acting...
Mrs Moore.
And it's acting head of infrastructure and natural assets, just for the record. So in response to question one, council has title for the foreshore area between the private properties along Pipe Clay Espinard and the high watermark. In 2010, council was approached by Mast to improve access and car parking as a contribution towards the new jetty and pontoon work that was done at that time. However, council was not in a position to improve access along the spit. Also, in response to a petition tabled in September 2013, council considered a report for providing an access road for properties on the spit beyond number 72 Pipe Clay Espinard. In relation to the unmade road under the local government highways act, council has no obligation to take over and maintain a road unless it's been constructed to a suitable standard. This provision is to ensure councils and their ratepayers take over roads from developers that are appropriately designed and constructed to minimise long-term maintenance and to maximise the life of the assets. Pipe Clay Espinard beyond number 72 was never designed or constructed in the first place, instead it was originally a track serving shacks in that area. The mechanism to make a road to standard is generally undertaken by a developer when creating a subdivision or by the people benefiting from the road, that is those people that are, or property owners that are immediately fronting the road but also downstream frontages as well. This ensures that the investment in making the road provides a benefit to the immediate property owners without imposing an undue burden on all ratepayers. Generally, a frontage scheme equally apportions the cost of the road construction between council, the state government and the landowners affected by the roadworks. Previous discussions elsewhere in Cremonn regarding frontage schemes were not supported by the majority of landowners and never proceeded. The issue is further complicated by the 2009 Clarence Climate Change Impacts Report that identified the pipe river inside of Cremonn as a priority area at risk of inundation and coastal erosion. Council adopted a coastal hazards policy in January 2021, which adopts a risk-based approach to managing coastal hazards and clarifies responsibilities regarding council-controlled land, crown land and privately owned land. The policy also enables council to develop coastal hazard management plans for key coastal areas and council, along with its consultants, are finalising the Pipe Clay Lagoon Coastal Management Plan as we speak, and that will be a key document to inform any future works in this area, including any road construction.
Thank you, Miss Moore, and the second question from Mr Hickman.
Miss Hickman of Cremonn, her second question is, will the Clarence City Council commit to consulting with locals and finding solutions to the issues listed in my submission which would focus on prevention? Miss Moore, the acting head of infrastructure and natural assets?
Thank you. Council has no ability to undertake enforcement of driving offences and can only contribute to addressing antisocial driver behaviour through modified infrastructure such as traffic calming devices or similar. These infrastructure changes can take a number of years to design, fund and implement and often have limited effectiveness in deterring the behaviour. All of the solutions suggested in Miss Hickman's submission would require a design input and funding allocation to deliver. Any infrastructure changes would need to be informed by the Pipe Clay Lagoon Coastal Management Plan. It's also worth noting that council has a Dobbin Ahoon campaign underway at the moment on our website, and that's being undertaken in conjunction with Tasmania Police who are best placed to undertake enforcement for that antisocial driver behaviour.
Thank you, Miss Moore, and there are two questions from Mr Bradley Walker of Hara, acting CEO.
Yes, the first question from Mr Walker. At council meeting, the 7th of August 2023, councillor James at 9.30 minutes on the council record asked for details of the Rosney Bowls Club within the sports facility strategic plan. Could this response, given in councillor's weekly briefing reports, please be made available to the community? Answer, at the meeting of 7th of August, in response to councillor James's question, the chief executive officer advised that he was unable to respond to the question at that stage as he believed that the specific question asked related to a confidential matter. No response has been provided in the weekly briefing report. Miss Bradley Walker's second question, at the writing of this question, the minutes of meeting held 28th of August, which was currently available for viewing, is not available online. I personally have noticed several changes to these online documents also, made after their original release. For the purpose of good housekeeping and transparency, why aren't these changes to the files noted on them? Answer, all minutes are subject to confirmation at the following council meeting. Until they are confirmed, amendments can be made to correct topographical errors or similar. The amended minutes are then recirculated to councillors so that the minutes as circulated can be confirmed. These are also made publicly available via the website. Amendments which are required regarding the proceedings of a meeting or are not made prior to the meeting at which they are to be confirmed are raised at item 4.1, confirmation of minutes. The details of those changes are noted as part of this decision to confirm. Specifically, in regard to the minutes of the council meeting of 28th of August, following the uploading to the website, it was realised that a question without notice from a member of the public had unintentionally been omitted. The correction was made, but unfortunately, due to an oversight, the amended minutes were not immediately replaced. As soon as this was discovered, the amended minutes were uploaded to the website.
Thank you, acting CEO. Now move on to 5.3, answers previous questions, take on notice, that's one just reference here from Mrs Joanne Marshall of Billreav. So moving now on to questions 4.4, are there any questions without notice from the gallery? Mr Fig, name and suburb, please.
Thank you, Mr Fig, welcome all. Lordordale, can you tell me, Mr Mayor, is there any change to the agenda tonight?
Acting CEO, I don't believe there's any change to the agenda. Is it changed agenda items?
Yes.
Yes, I think it's, yes, there will be, where that'll be advised as we come to item number seven on the agenda, yes.
Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Do you, is that satisfy? Thank you very much. Are there any other questions without notice from the gallery? There being none, we move now on to item number six, which is deputations by members of the public. Members of the public making deputation reminded they limited to three minutes and a timer will sound at the end of that time and Mr Henderson, I will have to strongly enforce that rule, but acting CEO, would you like to introduce Mr Henderson, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr Sam Henderson will be speaking on 7 to Nundal Street, Hara.
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor, thank you for allowing me to speak today. It is with regret that I am here today, if had I been more, I suppose persuasive with my interactions with planning people, I may have been able to have a conversation with them to perhaps tease out some of the finer details that I was concerned with, with the application that has been made and is before you today. One of the most interesting things in the new planning scheme that we're all being made to deal with now is that the wording within the clause that is, it's worded as having with regard to any topographical constraints. Now that is with regards to the setback of the car park that is currently at 7 to Nundal Street, which I will speak about briefly. But I'd also like to request that in the consideration, council also disregard the comment in the report that the applicant acknowledged that the proposal didn't meet the applicable standard. I did acknowledge that it didn't meet the 4.5, the 5.5 metre setback from the boundary, but the actual topographical constraints, again, I'd like that to be considered. So our point of contention is that any topographical constraint, those words are new to the planning scheme. So the topographical constraints can be considered as both natural and man-made features of the landscape, now I know man-made's probably not the correct PC terminology, but those man-made features do include the existing house, which has sat there circa 1960 with the carport buried at the front door. Now, what our proposal seeks to do is to make a better arrangement for the front door, making it more accessible and attractive to the streetscape, and by doing that, adding more, more access to and from the street, providing a clear boundary between the streetscape, but also in consideration of that streetscape, there are buildings, being carports or the other habitable buildings that are within one metre of the boundary too. So we also consider that within the context of the street, it's not out of reason that it be at that reduced setback, given those constraints found on site. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Henderson. I now advise that council intends to act as a planning authority under the Land Use Planning and Approvals Act of 1993. Moving on to item 7.1, development application of 7 to Nundal Street, Hara, conditions alterations, I understand is an alternative motion from councillor Mulder, which has been circulated. Is there a second up, please? Thank you councillor Kennedy, councillor Mulder.
I will be very brief, we've just received the deputation. We've had a look at this particular thing and the application, I will be moving with the application that's been circulated, including the conditions. I thank the planning staff for the prompt and efficient and effective way in which they've assisted in drafting the alternative. The reason for recommending approval is that the carport conforms with clause 8.4.2P2 in that the carport has a setback from the primary frontage that, at 2.95 metres, is actually greater than the 1.1 metre setback of the carport at number 2 to Nundal Street.
Thank you councillor Mulder, councillor Kennedy, please.
Nothing further to add other than to thank Mr Henderson for his deputation, we've had a couple of very similar items come before us in the last couple of meetings and I seek councillor's support.
Thank you councillor Kennedy, are there any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? Councillor James, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I think it's, it's important to probably refer to page 17 of the officer's report and in it, it says that under clause 8.4.2A2, specifically, the proposed carport is proposed to be set back 2.95 metres from the primary frontage, as opposed to the 5.5 metre primary frontage setback required by the acceptable solution. So in actual fact, it's contrary to that particular clause, and in the officer's assessment as part of the performance criteria, it says, and I quote, "The frontage setbacks of buildings on surrounding properties located on Tundal Street range from four metres to 7.1 metres, with the exception of number two", which has already been identified in the opening mover's comments, "which is located on the opposite side of the street and has a setback of approximately 1.1 metre." So in actual fact, all of those other properties, and if we look at the actual layout plan on the attachment, you can see that this is in a very high density area and the number, the blocks themselves range from 500 to 600 square metres. So the very nature of this in a very high density area, as far as the footprint is concerned, would have exceptional, would have exceptional consequences, if you can use that term, in relation to the setback. Now, I understand we have made a decision at another time in relation to 74 Bangali Street, but this is quite different by the very nature, and the officers have recommended for refusal on the basis that there is only one property, and that's in the notes I've just read to you, and also it's only one in a street where all of those other properties are in fact within that four to 7.1 metre setback. And I think in this circumstance, the officers have done the proper and appropriate means to make sure that we maintain the streetscape, in particular in these high-density areas, so that it's in conformity with the planning scheme, and therefore it means that they have, the officers have gone through and have recommended this for refusal. If this is motion is lost, I'll, sorry, I will foreshadow the officer's recommendation.
Thank you councillor James, any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? Councillor Hunter, thank you.
On page 14 of the officer's report, it says, "As part of the assessment and at the earliest opportunity, the applicant was made aware that the proposal did not comply with an applicable standard. The applicant was given the opportunity to provide alternative plans or proceed with the assessment based on the original submission, but that they chose not to." I don't like setting precedents, and in this case, this is what they're trying to do. I know in the deputation, they just said that they weren't made aware, however, I take the officer's advice, that they were made aware and then they were given the opportunity to change those plans, and I feel like they just wanted to bring it to test it here. I cannot support the alternative motion.
Thank you councillor Hunter. Deputy Mayor, councillor Ritchie.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This is one of those tricky ones that we face from time to time where sometimes the planning scheme correctly and appropriately applied, as it always is in my view when we get our reports from our officers, doesn't, doesn't always sit well with us regardless of the fact it is the correct assessment under the scheme. And we have from time to time in this place said, "Report is correct, recommendation is correct, but the sensible outcome is to overturn for whatever reason." I think that, and I don't, and like councillor Hunter, I don't also take these decisions lightly, and I don't think that people who bring these motions to this place do so lightly. I've actually gone and inspected the site, I don't feel that what's being proposed here will make any wildly significant change to the feeling, to the streetscape. I actually think, knowing the area very well and knowing how many houses are being redeveloped in this area, I suspect we'll start to see a lot of that. In fact, this will actually be in keeping with a lot of the houses that have already been developed in adjacent streets in this area, where they've seen older properties who have, that have been completely torn down or partially renovated and changed. So it is a changing suburb, Hara, Billreav of course as well, so I totally agree, not someone who usually likes to set a precedent either, I don't usually like to go against the recommendations without very good reason, although I'm very comfortable with this one because I know the area very well and I'm very comfortable that I don't think it will change the streetscape or in any way be detrimental. I've noted that there are no representations to oppose the proposal, and indeed unusually, we've seen representations to support it, which I think is probably the first time I might have seen that in this place. So for that reason, I will be supporting the alternative motion and would encourage colleagues to do likewise, thank you.
Thank you, deputy mayor, there being no other speakers, councillor Hugh, my apologies.
Thank you, Mayor. Look, I, I was genuinely undecided on this at the beginning of this debate, I thought I'd listen to the debate a bit, just to see what arguments are put forward, but on the question of, you know, the interpretation of the planning scheme, we do, we do need to apply the planning scheme and where I've, where I've disagreed and diverged from officer's recommendations is where, where I've had a different interpretation of the planning scheme, and that was the case in relation to the Bangali Street and the development Seven Mile Beach, I've forgotten the name of the street for that one. In this case, I do actually accept the interpretation, the planning staff. This is, this is about, this standard is about preservation of streetscape, and it's basically saying that in terms of the performance criteria, if you allow something that's inconsistent with other properties, then you basically set that as the new standard for setbacks. And yes, there is a property in the surrounding area that has a much smaller setback, but it's on the other side of the street. So in terms of what the purpose of this, this particular use standard, if it's about preservation of the streetscape, then really, I don't think it's relevant to apply a setback on an opposite side of the street. So I will be voting against this motion and supporting the officer's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hugh, thank you councillor Warren.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, like many of my colleagues, I take the officer's report very seriously, but like councillor Ritchie, in this case, I think that it would be a positive outcome to vote for the alternative motion, given that there are no representations, it is a changing suburb, it's a carport, not a solid wall. I think that this is a case where we can use our judgement and apply some common sense, and I will be supporting the alternative motion.
Thank you councillor Warren, councillor Walker, please.
Yeah, look, just briefly, and most points have been covered, but...
but I think when we also think about changing areas, we think about the changing natures of some of the households, and many of the households around Tundal Street have traditionally been, you know, nuclear family homes. But like many areas, I guess there's an intensification, there's more use by, you know, families where the children aren't leaving at 18 but staying longer. And what we need to think about, where we do get this wrong elsewhere, is where we just end up with cars that spill onto the streets, that occupy the front streetscape, that dominate, if you like, your visual aspect as you drive down. And I actually think, some of these, I actually think, as we accommodate this, and Tundal is a very narrow street, you know, quality carports done in this manner are actually a benefit. We've already heard about the other number two, which is very close to number seven. And I appreciate all the work the planning staff have done on this, and they've gone right through the rules. We do have some discretion in this area, and I think it is right to exercise that discretion, given many of the points that have been raised, not just about the zero representation, but matters of topography, et cetera. So I was open to being persuaded, but I'll stick with the alternate motion that the movers crafted, and thank him for doing so.
Thank you, councillor Walker. Any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? There being none, councillor Mulder, one reply, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and before we go making aspersions about the proponent, clearly, from his deputation, it was a misunderstanding. The deputation was all about the topography and the reasons, yet when the officer's report comes out, it's actually about the streetscape. So I, you know, I take that on board. It's not a, and we should just accept the fact that there's obviously been a misunderstanding between the planners and the proponents. Let me just say that the acceptable solution here is 5.5 metres. Now, we all know that when considering these things, it's not the meeting of the acceptable solution, it's the addressing the performance criteria. When you address the performance criteria, it simply says that it's about conforming to the streetscape. Now, if number two was, you know, the only one in the street that was less than 5.5 metres, I'd still be sort of arming and arsing, just because it's on the other side of the street does not mean it's not having an impact on the streetscape. It doesn't say the side of the streetscape, it says the whole streetscape. So we really should be looking at the streetscape up and down. And it's quite clear that number two at 1.1 metres is not the only one that's less than five metres, because there are a range of them, between four and seven metres. And our four metres is on the streetscape, and it's less than the 5.5. So there's precedent's been set in a number of cases, at least two, possibly more, situations in Tundal Street. And the point is that if this was a solid garage wall, which obstructed views and blocked things, yes, it might be, but they're open carports. There's no more obstruction of the view, of the viewlines or the streetscape than there would be if there was a car park there without a carport over it. So, you know, that's sort of a streetscape approach, I think we need to take some common sense. And this is somewhere we have discretion. There are no representatives, no one can appeal, and I'm absolutely sure that that's what the planning scheme had in mind when it said, "You have to have objectors before", who are the only people that can appeal. So here's a community that thinks this is a good thing, doesn't see any problems with it, it conforms to the planning scheme, and the alternative recommendation is coming about because, as I've explained, I have a different view of what interpretation of what streetscape means.
Councillor Mulder, thank you. I'll now put the alternative motion standing in the name of councillor Mulder, seconded by councillor Kennedy, that is for approval. All those in favour? Against? So, carry. Thank you. Moving now on to item 7.2. This is the development application, 476 South Arm Road, 488 South Arm Road, Lordordale for landfill. The applicant for the development application at this address for landfill has requested the matter be withdrawn from consideration at tonight's meeting, and has paid the required fee. I will, as, I'll now call for a procedural motion to withdraw a mover. Thank you, councillor Chong, a second, and thank you, councillor Kennedy. As it's procedural motion, I'll put the motion. All those in favour? That's unanimous, so withdraw them. Thank you. Council now concludes its deliberations as a planning authority under the Land Use Planning and Approvals Act 1993. We now move on to item number eight, which there is no business. Item number nine, motion on notice, there are none. Item 10, councillors' question time. 10.3, answers to questions without notice, previous council meeting, as listed in the agenda. Moving on to item 10.4, questions without notice. And using the chair's prerogative, I'll call on councillor Goine, if you have any questions without notice this evening, councillor.
I have two questions this evening. I just wanted to know if we had any news on the progress of the Greyhound off-leash trial area in Billreath.
Thank you. Ms Moore, in a position to provide an answer there, please?
Mayor, I understand that there's a report coming to the next council meeting in relation to dog management, which includes some details around greyhounds.
Thank you.
And I just would like to know if there's any rules in regards to councillors' attire, in particular, politically branded logos, and the use of props to make public statements in chambers?
The short answer is no, there's not. If something is overly offensive, that would be the discretion of the chair. But there's a number of laptops that come in here from time to time with political slogans and messages on them. There's people that might wear clearly branded shirts or badges. From my perspective, that's their choice to do that. So feel free, by all means, I look forward to seeing you on the ninth of October.
Exactly. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Goine, if you need to duck out. Thank you. So now we'll go to deputy mayor, do you have any questions? Thank you. Councillor Mulder?
I have two, Mr Mayor.
Thank you.
None of them relates to the answer, yes, I would imagine. I referred to the planning permit for the use of Three Droofy Point Road for a landscape supplies depot, which this council passed in October last year. Neighbours advised that some of the permit conditions are not being met, and that they have informed council of this, but they have not, but they do not appear to have been acted on. Could you please provide an update, Mr Mayor, on the current enforcements of the permit conditions, and whether or not they are all being complied with, and if so, what action has been taken?
Thank you, councillor Mulder. Ms Olson, please.
Through you, Mayor. We're very aware of the operations at number three Droofy Point Road. It's currently under development, and so there are, we need to allow them time to actually comply with the rules in the, or the conditions of that planning permit. So we are regularly inspecting the site to make sure that they are in compliance.
Thank you, Ms Olson. Councillor Mulder?
Second question, as it relates to my question on the previous council meeting, which was regarding the Kangaroo Bay Apartments. In the further information, the CEO, the acting CEO, has stated that there will be a requirement to vary the sale and development agreement between council and Hunter Developments. My question is, what is the nature of this variation? Particularly, does it relate to the governor-general's valuation, the valuer-general's valuation of the sites?
Thank you, councillor Mulder. Ms Shaw, are you able to provide an answer?
The reference to a variation to the sale and development agreement refers to a different DA being presented to council.
A different DA being presented to council because the developer has changed some of the...
I think, I gather that the sale and development agreement goes into details about the proposal, and that's been...
That's correct.
I'll take some comfort that we're not caving in, Mr Hunter.
Thank you, councillor Mulder, as always, for your comments. Councillor Hunter? Councillor Hume?
Just one question tonight, Mr Mayor. I was wondering if council gathers any statistics or produces any reports in terms of performance against our customer charter?
Ms Weeks, thank you.
Through you, Mayor. Currently not, but that's something that we're looking into when we deliver our customer service strategy. Probably early next year, we're looking at doing that.
Thank you, Ms Weeks. Councillor James?
Mayor, two questions. Firstly, I understand, and it's really a follow-on from councillor Mulder, in regarding a different DA is to be presented to council with respect to the Shambro development. And my question is...
Just to be clear, so it's not the Shambro development, it's Hunter Developments, the Bull...
Sorry, it's the Hunter, yeah, sorry, it's the Hunter Development, I beg your pardon. It's been topical for so long. Would that necessitate a further, well, if that is presented to council, does that make the earlier DA null and void?
Thank you for the question. Ms Olson, are you in a position to answer that?
I'll take that on notice, sorry.
Right, thank you. Councillor James, just a question, please.
Thank you. What is the procedure for non-executive members and the community members to resolve issues related to the alderman's expectation, statement of expectations?
CEO, you thought we answered this last meeting?
It was a bit different, if you look at the documentation.
Well, we'll come back to it in writing, because the process is actually set out in that document quite clearly. But CEO, acting CEO, would you like to add anything else?
No, I think take that on notice.
Thank you, all right. Councillor Walker?
Look, I do have an alderman's request in on the matter, but I think if I'm able to get any illumination prior, it would be really useful. There's quite some conjecture around a rather large, two-metre-ish sign that's been erected for accommodation along Intago Bay Road. I guess I'm wanting to understand whether that's a, whether this is a typical thing, and some of the actions that might be taken if it's out of character, given the fact that, well, it is out of character for the area, but my understanding usually with accommodation signage that you put in application to have a small discreet sign added, potentially to a street pole, but this appears to be two poles being put in for a sign. So if you're not able to answer that now, that's okay, but I think the sooner we can come to some understanding of it, the better.
Ladies, Ms Moore or Ms Olson?
I'm happy to answer that. So we are aware of the sign. It has, we're in the process of working through, it is bigger than was anticipated. The sign that was supplied was not correct, but it was installed nonetheless. So we're in the process of working through whether the business actually qualifies for the sign, and also the appropriate size for it. So it should, if it is eligible for the sign, it should be a smaller, like a street name blade, sign underneath the street name, sign for that location.
I'll take some comfort from that, because given the number of N B properties in Clarence, you know, we're just going to be, yeah, follow signs. My second question is something that I'll probably end up asking about every quarter, given that's roughly when we all get our Tas Water bills. As we are notionally owners of Tas Water, are we able to make representations around the fact that the bills are now being a little oblique around how you pay with credit cards? Now, you can get through to there, but with most bills, including council, it's clearly written how to pay with credit cards. So, yeah, the question is, can you please raise that with Tas Water and use all influence you can as notionally the 11% larger shareholder to allow awkward burgers to easily pay with their credit card?
Thank you. Ms Mulder, do you want to add anything to that, please?
No, but we'll look into it for you and contact Tas Water.
Thank you. Councillor Duckett? Councillor Warren? Councillor Chong?
Very prosaic question, please. I noticed today in the news that Kingborough Council is looking at compostable dog poo bags, and my question is two parts. Firstly, are ours compostable? And if not, can we look at putting that into the next cycle of budget and planning next year?
I think that might be your area, Ms Moore, you get all the fun questions.
Through you, Mayor. I'll have to take that one on notice.
Thank you. I did notice that pop up today as well, actually, a good move in my direction. Your second question, councillor Chong? Councillor Kennedy?
Surprisingly not. Thank you.
All right, well, colleagues, I'll now, we've now moved to item number 11, which is a closed meeting. I've moved from a motion to move into closed meeting. A mover? Thank you, councillor Kennedy, seconded by councillor Warren, thank you. I'll put the motion, all those in favour? That's unanimous, thank you. So thank you to those members of the public who joined us this evening here in the public gallery. To those at home, thank you very much. I look forward to seeing you back here, same place, same time, in three weeks' time, on the ninth of October. If you could please close the fee. Thank you.